And a deep sense of duty. He was a true gentleman, respectful, kind, and always ready to listen. Whether at a church supper, local fair, or community event, Guy was always there to show his support. I had the privilege of working for Guy from 2016 until his retirement. I was blessed to see his hard work and dedication to his community firsthand, and am a better person for the lessons I learned from him. Guy worked for the people and did not let political ideology getting in the way of furthering his goals of leaving behind a better community. I doubt anyone would say he did not accomplish that. He was respected by leaders from across the Isles, and this was illustrated just this last Thursday, when upon learning of his declining health, Guy received a personal phone call from former Prime Minister Stephen Harper, who held Guy in very high esteem, to pay his final respects and reinforce what he meant not only to his government but to all Canadians. The legacy he has left behind will be remembered for generations to come. Visitation will be held at the Wilson Funeral Home in Cornwall this Thursday, June 26th, from 7 till 9 p.m., and Friday, June 27th, from 2 to 4 and 7 to 9 p.m. Funeral service will be held at St. Andrews West Catholic Church on Saturday, June 28th, at 10:30 a.m. Rest in peace, and may the Lord, knowing your rock-solid faith in Him, welcome you into His loving arms.
If we can take a moment of silence. So I will see any other opening remarks from other members of council, seeing none. I'd like to acknowledge that councillor McDonald will be joining us on Zoom this evening. Can you hear us, Allison?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. And do you have any opening remarks that you would like to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda.
Be it resolved that the agenda be approved as presented, moved by councillor Bajali, seconded by councillor Shane.
Any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Is there any disclosure of community interest in nature thereof? Seeing none. Thanks, Allison. So, all in favor? Sorry, there's no favor there, there's just a force of habit. So, moving on to our delegation. So, I'm pleased to announce that tonight is where we're going to acknowledge our recipient of the Senior of the Year Award presentation that will be coming forward for Mrs. Nancy Wirt. So, possibly if we can get Nancy to, so we'll recognize Nancy, I guess Nolan also has something that, so we will start by, so if you could stand right there to the side, we will start by having Mr. Nolan Quinn, what is it? Is it a video?
I'm Nolan Quinn, your Member of Provincial Parliament for Stormont, Dundas, and South Glengarry. While I'm sorry I couldn't be with you in person tonight, I didn't want to miss the chance to offer my heartfelt congratulations and thanks. As many of you know, June is Seniors Month, a time to honor the incredible contributions our seniors have made to building the strong, vibrant communities we're proud to call home here in Stormont, Dundas, and South Glengarry, and across all of Ontario. I was thrilled to hear that the township of North Stormont nominated a remarkable individual for the Ontario Senior of the Year Award, an honor that recognizes seniors over the age of 65 who continue to make outstanding contributions to their communities through social, cultural, or civic engagement. This year's recipient, Nancy Wirt, could not be more deserving. I've had the pleasure of knowing Nancy for several years and can personally speak to her generosity, her energy, and her unwavering commitment to the people of North Stormont. Whether it's lending a hand at community suppers, breakfasts, or local events, Nancy is always making sure everything runs smoothly and that everyone feels welcome. On behalf of the Government of Ontario and the people of Stormont, Dundas, and South Glengarry, I want to extend my deepest congratulations to Nancy on being recognized with the 2025 Ontario Senior of the Year Award. Nancy, thank you for all you do, and congratulations once again on this well-earned recognition.
So, if I can just may add to this, so, again, I'm happy to say I've known Nancy for many years. I've had the fortunate opportunity to sit on council for eight years with her husband. There's always a good woman behind every man, and I believe that's a very true statement for Nancy. So, she has spearheaded many activities throughout North Stormont, starting with the house and porch tour that's been taking place now for quite a few years. We've also seen the 100 women and also now men throughout North Stormont, again Nancy being one of the, one looking after all this. So, again, for all that you do, it's unfortunate that we had to lie about your age to hit the 65 mark, but I would like, on behalf of the township of North Stormont and rest of council, to congratulate you on a job well done, and I'm sure you've got many years left in you to support our community. So, thank you very much.
On behalf of the township of North Stormont, in regards to the 2025 Senior of the Year Award, signed by Mr. Honorable Raymond Sow, that has to honor the Honorable Edith Dumont, which is our Lieutenant Governor of Ontario, and myself as head of council, I'd like to congratulate Nancy for this award. Not to be overdone at all, but I've been doing my double duty now. Also wanted to first need the word "you" to go back to the title. Thank you very much. If I can maybe get Carol to get a, so I'd like to stand in front, so if we can roll in front there, Nancy, move down.
Yeah, we'll never see you in front.
Watch that step. Watch that step. Get your, yeah, stand up in the back for me, and just maybe swipe your, you might just, that would be, she'll be there. Yeah. Yeah, that'd be true, so I think we'll.
It's okay if I say a few words before you do, so you have the last word? you know, someone does not achieve Senior of the Year without delivering great things on many fronts. And I think knowing Nancy, you could just as easily call her Wife of the Year, Daughter of the Year, Mom of the Year, Hot Dog Mom of the Year, Gamma of the Year, and Volunteer of the Year, Meal Maker of the Year, Friend of the Year, House Mover of the Year this year, and the list goes on. Nancy has helped raise thousands and thousands of dollars for this community through leading many events, like the house tour, porch tour, as the mayor mentioned. Nancy, you're a positive force in this community, and I can't think of anybody more deserving of this award, so congratulations. Over to you.
Well, now that I'm a senior, I tend to write things down. I am deeply honored and humbled to receive this award this evening from the township council. I have to be honest, when Craig sent me an email a few weeks ago announcing and asking if I could attend tonight's meeting to receive it, I was totally shocked for two reasons. One is I did not expect to be recognized this way because our township is fluent and full and vibrant with so many individuals that are just remarkable beyond words. And secondly, it confirmed that I truly was a senior, so that kind of hurt. But we all get there, right? This award is not just about me, it's about a lifetime of moments and memories and the many, many, many people who have touched my life along the way, and many of you are in this room this evening to support me, because many of you have been on committees that I've dragged you into or events that I've asked you to help me plan. So, but first and most importantly is my own family. Jim and the boys have, over the years, totally supported me, well, okay, not maybe always supported me, totally, but I think there was two incidents, they looked at me with that hairy eyeball, like, really, Mom, you were going to do this? And I said, yep, we're going to put out a live nativity scene at our church on that one porch tour with, including a donkey that took off down Main Street. Or, secondly, when we invited 2,000 guests to our home farm to have breakfast on the farm program, and they just said, okay. But they were right there for me all the way, through all of, all my activities that I'm involved with. So, it's all those things that add up, and then there's the many friends and neighbors and colleagues as well that I've had to work with or been able to work with over the years. So, I may be the one receiving the reward, but believe me, I share it with all of you and you're all a part of it. So, and Jim and I, we're just watching a new series last night because we just spent our first evening in the new house, so we got into a series on Netflix, and there was a really cool line that came out of it that says, "There are two kinds of people in the world, those that hit the gas and those that hit the brakes, and they're both okay, it's just you have to decide which one you want to be." And Jim said, "I sometimes hit the gas pedal just a little too hard." Maybe like warp speed, but anyways, there is nothing wrong with either, and you just have to decide, I guess. So, thank you again to our township council for this shining light on seniors, and I accept this award not, or not just as a recognition for the past and the things I've accomplished, but as a reminder to keep on giving, no matter of the number of candles on my cake, and so I really appreciate it, and thank you very, very much, and thank you all for being here.
And if I can just add, the process was dealt through the municipality, so it came from the province through to us, but the peer, like, it's your peers that basically brought this forward. The group at the A, the Avemore Community Centre are the ones that brought this to light. So, it's not just on our part, we recognize who you are and what you do for our community, but it's the whole community as a whole, I think, that brought this on to give you this award tonight. So, again, thank you very much. So, your, Jim mentioned that many times, you're more than welcome to stay for the excitement, or if you do have other adventures, it is understood with life being so fast. So, moving on to my agenda, to the adoption of minutes of our previous meeting, Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as presented, regular meeting June 10th, 2025, moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor Bajali.
Any questions or comments on missions on the agenda? Previous, seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to the adoption of minutes of our committee and local boards.
The council of the township of North Stormont accept the following committee minutes as presented for information purposes, Raisin Region Conservation Authority Board minutes of May 1st, 2025, Raisin Region Conservation Authority Board highlights of June 6th, 2025, moved by councillor Shane, seconded by councillor Bajali.
Thank you. Once again, any comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to item 9.1, the authorized, excuse me, preservicing agreement with Tri-Pine Development Incorporated.
That the council of the township of North Stormont accept the information report PDU 04-2025 from the planning department and support the, and support the preservicing agreement with Tri-Pine Development Inc., also known as Stormont Development Inc., moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor Shane.
Thank you. So, I'm happy to have our planner, Mr. Peter Young, with us. Did you want, before we go to question, did you want to maybe just speak on the, on that item? Please.
Sure, happy to, Mr. Mayor. So, this is the subdivision that there was a public meeting for earlier this month. In terms of the review, it's moved forward very well, and the engineers and public works in terms of where the road would go and the layout and water and sewer have supported that. There's still, from the public meeting, some issues related to the property behind it and what to do with that, and I think that's in the process of being, preparing a recommendation for council, but the next council meetings are until late July and August. If council approves this report, it would authorize the CAO to sign a preservicing agreement. The CAO already has that ability. If I've given approval for the draft plan of subdivision, this would just allow us to coordinate in advance to let them start construction on the water and sewer while the issues around the property behind it, the proposed parkland are resolved, and we do have positive kind of feeling so far on that. So, hopefully, we'll be able to take that to council maybe in the July or August meeting, but in the meantime, this would allow the servicing. As you can see with the shape of the property, there weren't really too many options for the road, it kind of has to go that way and have one entrance on the county road, one entrance on the township road, so the layout would not be changing, it's just the, and we wouldn't allow construction without the township engineers signing off as well.
Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, I think if we've got everything lined up as far as a preservicing agreement, as long as it's followed and I'm comfortable with it. So, I appreciate councillor McDonald. Any further questions? You're good? Thank you very much. So, with that said, we have a mover, seconder, so any further questions on, seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Allison. Moving on to the revised water and wastewater billing and collection policy. Madam Clerk.
That the council of the township of North Stormont accepts report FIN 11-2025 from the Treasury regarding the revised water and wastewater billing policy to be formally accepted by bylaw, moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor Bajali.
Thank you. Any questions to our Treasury?
Just a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Just to, I appreciate the format, too, with the track changes, love it. It's just very easy for us to go through these policies and see the highlighted areas and languages that have been changed, so I appreciate that. Makes our reading a lot easier.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would have put it in the original document, but there was, the new formats are so different than the old formats, and there was too much to change that the track changes in the original document were really, really ugly. So, I just abbreviated them and made the new one, so thank you.
Thank you. So, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Item 9.3, the corporate vehicle policy.
That the council of the township of North Stormont accepts report FIN 12-2025 from the Treasury regarding a corporate vehicle policy to be passed formally by bylaw, moved by councillor Bajali, seconded by councillor Shane.
Thank you. Any question? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, thank you, first of all, I think this is very much needed and well-laid out, and so I think it's going to serve us well. Just a couple of the bullet points. So, in 4.2, it says, "It is the responsibility of operators to use township vehicles for business purposes." I'm tempted to put the word "only" there, but it's impossible for them to use it "only" because some people live outside, right? And, but the only reason that kind of jumped out at me is because if you could go down to section 6.0 as well, it says, in the second bullet point, so it's talking about taxable benefits and when things have to be applied as a taxable benefit. And the first thing it leads off is, "Personal use includes vacation trips, driving to conduct personal activities, and travel between." And I don't think we're looking for people who have corporate vehicles to take them on vacation and use them as mileage, and so I just wanted to be sure, how can we address that potential ambiguity in this? Because I don't want this to be permission now to use the corporate vehicle for vacation.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I had a tough time with this one. The vacation in number six, the, what is defined as the taxable benefit, that comes right off CRA definitions of personal use. I had a struggle with that first paragraph, that first point in "use" because we have people that use it for what's considered personal from the place of employment to home. So, if I said "business purposes only," that would be excluded. Like, so, I really struggled on this one, and both the CAO brought it to my attention. I said, "This is my reasoning behind that," because if it's "only," that means they're not taking it home.
Well, I guess one could argue, if we put the word "only," they are driving to work. So, it is, in a sense, getting to, but I feel your pain.
That was my struggle.
I don't know how to resolve it either.
I didn't know how to resolve it, so I left it as that, because the intent, maybe the intent of township vehicles is for business purposes, maybe the word "intent" should be in there, I don't know, but I can't put "only" because they, there is portions that they can use for personal, and it's considered taxable. And with the GPS units going in there and the monthly monitoring, we can track that now, so it's, it can be doable, but I didn't know how to address it. So, if you want me to maybe change the word instead of "use," say, "The intent is for business purposes," I don't know how to, I don't know how to address it.
As long as the CAO feels equipped to manage it, I'm fine. I think we agree on the intent, so.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, Allison. Motion is carried. Moving on to the 2026 election, or municipal election voting methods.
That the council of the township of North Stormont approve report admin 11-2025 from the CAO clerk for alternative voting methods, specifically internet and phone-based voting methods for the 2026 municipal election, moved by councillor Shane, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you. Any discussion that, or Deputy Mayor Dencham?
Yeah. So, first of all, I agree, online voting and telephone voting is the most cost-effective, most convenient way, form of voting, and I think it does encourage voter turnout, for sure. Do we know, has anything been done about the quality of the voter list since last election? I know that was a big issue, and we had longstanding residents who didn't appear on the list.
We're optimistic it did move from MPAC to another provider, so we will be trying to clean up through our staff, but the previous lists, I believe, are going to be much more streamlined, but that's yet to be seen.
Yeah, because I know that was a big gap, as far as I was concerned, there were a lot of people who were missing, who I said, who, like I say, have been residents for longer than I have, so hopefully that's been cleaned up. The other thing, too, one thing, I think I talked to you briefly about it, Craig, and I did a little bit of research, and I'm not very optimistic on this, but one thing that I was wondering is whether there's something other than the birth date that could be used in conjunction with the voter card PIN to be the secondary validation, because I know the report said that there wasn't, weren't any security challenges during the 2022 election, but I am aware of, and I know staff is aware of the fact, that we had an individual taking pictures of voter cards at Canada Post, which implies not the, not, it makes you a little bit nervous about what may be going on, and from my perspective, birth date, especially with social media, is an easy thing to get their hands on. So, I don't know, was it, whether that's something that could be researched, or whether you've had a chance to look at that?
We just entered into our contract, well, all of the townships, I believe, have renewed their contract with data fix, so I did make an inquiry. I have not gotten a response yet for that particular inquiry, but I will update council as soon as possible, if that is an option, and what the other option is as far as identification.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Craig. Any other questions? Councillor McDonald? You're good? So, with that said, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to our bylaws, item 10.1, bylaw number 43-2025, in regards to the 2026 municipal election form.
Be it resolved that bylaw number 43-2025 being a bylaw to authorize the use of French in notices and prescribed forms for the 2026 municipal election, be read a first, second, and third time, passed, signed, and sealed in open council this 24th day of June 2025, moved by councillor Bajali, seconded by councillor Shane.
Thank you. I think that's, just given any questions, seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Item 10.2, the bylaw number 44-2025, repeal and replace bylaw number 71-2023, the water and wastewater billing and collection policy.
Be it resolved that bylaw number 44-2025 being a bylaw to repeal and replace bylaw number 71-2023, and to adopt policy number FIN 02-2025, the water and wastewater billing and collection policy for the township of North Stormont, be read a first, second, and third time, passed, signed, and sealed in open council this 24th day of June 2025, moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor Bajali.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Bylaw number 45-2025 to repeal and replace bylaw number 39-2024 for a temporary patio extension policy.
Be it resolved that bylaw number 45-2025 being a bylaw to repeal and replace bylaw number 39-2024, and to adopt policy number admin 02-2025, the temporary patio extension policy for the township of North Stormont, be read a first, second, and third time, passed, signed, and sealed in open council this 24th day of June 2025, moved by councillor Shane, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you. So, is there a reason, are we amending something that came up that maybe our director, the reason for the patio, was it the changes, what was the reason? So, either Pierre or Leanne can add comments?
So, through the chair, the previous policy in 2C had a 1.11 square meters per person. However, the building code has changed in recent years, so we wanted to change that just to reflect that it must meet the Ontario Building Code regulations rather than bringing it back every year if there's been any changes to that. So, that was the only change that was made. I'm not sure of the number of now, what it is exactly, but that's the only reason we changed it.
So, it wasn't a specific case that they were coming to us for changes?
No, no, it was, it, through the chair, it was brought forward to us, we just had a request come in, and in reviewing this, the building department, along with the bylaw and fire department, also caught that because the building code had changed, the numbers weren't accurate, so we just wanted to make it correct.
Perfect. Any further questions?
Again, just a comment on this, this is probably one of the few good things that came out of COVID, was a way for businesses to start to think outside the box and expanding areas, so for outdoor space. So, glad to see this kind of being ingrained now as a permanent fixture moving forward, and hopefully some other businesses in our, in our community can actually start taking advantage of that and letting us enjoy the heat, except for the last couple of days.
Perfect. So, no further questions? All in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to our correspondence, item 11.1 to 11.4, any questions? Or, sorry, I'll have the motion read first. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that the correspondence as listed as items 11.1 to 11.4 on the agenda be received, moved by councillor Bajali, seconded by councillor Shane.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. So, moving on to, we're rolling right along to the unfinished business in regards to item 14.1, in regards to the Belle Canada Trail.
That the council of the township of North Stormont reconsideres the original request to accept report admin 10-2025 from the CAO clerk regarding the potential disposition of the southern portion of the Belle Canada Trail, PIN 601060413, and to direct administration to obtain a legal opinion on the process to transfer land and to further obtain to obtain a legal opinion on the process to transfer lands and to further obtain an evaluation of this prior, property prior to any sale taking place as presented at the May 27th regular meeting of council. Moved by Council Begeli, second by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you. So any questions or comments in regards to the trail? I'll start with Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Somebody, somebody has to start, I guess. So again, this is, has come up, my position hasn't changed since we talked about it at the last meeting. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it's been less than 10 years since that property was acquired from Belle Canada. And since then, a lot of work has been gone, gone into the trail to make it really a wonderful asset for the community. And a lot of people have put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that. I don't think their work is done. I think there's still lots of work for the future. And in fact, we approved not too long ago, the creation of a bridge to cross, cross over the water, which would take you over to that section of, of the trail. So it kind of implies the fact that that trail in some capacity is, is going to be used. So from my perspective, like I say, at this point, we have enough members of the public who actively want to continue the work being done on the, on the, the trail. I don't see any reason to, to make the decision as it's laid out in, in the motion today. That being said, I would hope that the parties would continue to talk because I've also seen through email some interesting ideas in terms of, you know, waterfront property, these types of things. So if the, the parties want to continue to talk and see whether or not they can come up with something that everybody's happy with, more power to them. But as the motion is, is laid out right here, again, I, I can't see myself supporting it at this time.
Thank you. Any further questions? Go ahead, Counselor Shane.
I could add to this also, since the last meeting, my position has also hasn't changed. I've spoke with many, many members, many members of the community, as well as the members of the trail committee. Having a trail around town, it's a benefit. Losing a trail, you'll never get one back. I understand the position of the farmer. They got large equipment. They, one big field is easier to work. They don't want to travel through town, down the road. Hopefully there won't be complaints from town. They got to travel down Station Street to get there. But having said that, hopefully communication can continue down the road. I've also heard about the possible trails along the water. Maybe they can work something out. Give this trail for the same amount of trail and then a nicer view along the river. Maybe that's something they can work out down the road.
No questions. You, Counselor McDonald, anything to add?
Yep. Just briefly, I appreciate council allowing the report to originally be deferred so that we could have an opportunity. I know both Counselor Begeli and I were not there. And I also have received a lot of feedback from the community and, and a lot of people, as was mentioned, who have put a lot of work into this trail, who have taken a lot of pride in creating something and who have excitement about the opportunities for the trail moving forward in reference to our support for trying to build a bridge to connect the trail. So I think there's a lot of community investment and community passion about these green spaces. And I really support that and I really respect that. I also think it's important to figure out a, a practical accommodation for our agricultural landowners so they do not need to travel up, you know, subdivision roads, for example. So we do have to find a solution that works for everybody. And I do think this requires some more conversation as was already mentioned by the deputy mayor. So I appreciate staff bringing it forward. But at this time, I, I share the feeling that it's, it's not quite ready for a decision and we need to have conversation about what is the bigger picture for these recreational trails within Chrysler and how can we make it work with our, with our neighbors and, and agricultural friends. So I, I feel like, I appreciate council giving us the time, but I don't know if the conversation is quite finished at this time.
Perfect. Thank you. Do you want to add to that, Counselor Begeli?
Yes. I, again, appreciate the, the opportunity to be able to, to go on the record on this issue. Like my colleagues, I've, I've heard from many of the residents with respect to their passion for the trail and, and not seeing us make a premature decision as in severing off a piece of that trail before real tangible conversations can be had or practical conversations can be had on how this could be moved forward in a, in a more cooperative way. As, as yourself, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor have mentioned, we're looking at things like building a bridge and expanding the trail system. And to do something to cut it off at its knees before that even takes place, I think, is, is, wouldn't be a very prudent decision at, at this step. And it's, it's very, very premature at this point.
Thank you. So I guess I can have the, the last word. So the reason behind the deferral at the last meeting, one, Counselor Begeli, as well as Counselor McDonald were not present. So they actually got to, to participate in the discussion. The township is not here to look at selling our capital asset. This is our trail. I mentioned where it was unfortunate that the trail was sold, period, where farmers got to be able to claim some bits and pieces, which now eliminates the fact that we could have had a beautiful trail back in, in the past if the, the vision would have been there. With that said, we are not looking at disposing of any say, or any piece of the trail. What we want to do is work together with the group of citizens that do work the trail, that utilize the trail. So, but at the same time, the farmer brought a proposal, so it was not a, it was perceived as council was bringing this on the agenda to sell it. That was not the case. It was basically a request that came in front of council under a democratic process, which took place. So with that said, I still have the intent of having a group, we're the owner of the trail. So that's what we, we have the last say is what happens to it. But direction that can be taken, there's many emails that came in talking about the flood plain, talking about, and this is the vision I see that could potentially, if we can revert, follow the, the water, have something near at the end and get a swap where, which is, we're not selling anything. We're just flipping the, but what I want is to make sure that it meets the, the requests or the, the needs of the community. At the same time, the request of the farmer that just wants to farm his land. So we're not, tonight, I think, decision is to look at, are we interested in selling the trail? No. So that is my concern and we'll see where, where this takes us. But at the same time, the property in question, which has been mentioned about subdivision, nothing's signed. It's more, it's at the early stage. So this is gonna, not gonna be happening. There's no houses going in next week. So we got time on our side to basically put the heads together and see, is there a possibility that we could do? And if it stays status quo, we'll work at something to align where they can get at the far end, maybe to cross, to avoid. I still believe that Station Road is not the access for this big machinery to, to take down, especially if new houses are coming in, to cross into that piece. So that's where I want to have the discussion and work it out together moving forward. So I think that's clear. I don't think members of council can object to my comments, but what we will do for tonight's motion, it's on the table. I'll have Madam Clerk just reread the motion and we'll bring it to a vote.
The Council of the Township of North Stormont reconsideres the original request to accept report admin 10-2025 from the CAO clerk regarding the potential disposition of southern portion of the Belle Canada Trail, PIN 601060413, and to direct administration to obtain a legal opinion on the process to transfer lands and to further obtain an evaluation of the property prior to any sale taking place as presented at the May 27th regular meeting of council. Moved by Council Begeli, second by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you. So the votes out there, all in favor? Against? Thank you. Motion is defeated. Moving on to, there's no new business. So our scheduling of our next meeting, so we do have a committee of adjustment coming up this Thursday, June 26 at 8:30 in the morning. We have a fire service committee meeting at 6:30 on June 26 as well. Our regular meeting in July, which there will only be one meeting, will take place July 22. And also just one meeting in August for the summer holidays that will be held on August the 12th. Moving on to our coming events. I apologize. I think mostly, as I recall, all rec committees have their websites up with everything that's going on. Please feel, go and have a look and, and support. I know there's the Moose Creek and Avanmore both are having Canada Day fireworks that are being held. And go out and support your communities. Moving on to closing remarks from council. Any closing remarks? Seeing none. The ratification by law. Madam Clerk.
We have resolved that bylaw number 46-2025 being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify council's actions at its regular meeting in June 24, 2025. Be read a first, second, and third time, passed, signed, and sealed in open council this 24th day of June 2025. Moved by Council Shane, second by Council Begeli.
Thank you. And the, I guess there's no questions. All in favor? Motion is carried. And the adjournment, please.
We have resolved that this regular meeting adjourn at 6:43 PM. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, second by Council Shane.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Motion is carried. Thank you, Allison, for taking the time to join us. Enjoy the rest of your evening and all the people in attendance as well. So have a good night. Thank you.